Seven A, Today Session on Sustainability. Victoria, have you received any public comment cards?
No.
Thank you. And I forgot to mention earlier that there was no public comment written in on the form for this meeting. But Jason, Jeff, I'm not sure who's leading, but the floor is yours.
I'll give it to Jeff.
Thank you. I will brief. I'm, I have the pleasure to introduce Dr. Tim Baird, who's with Green Schools National Network, who's been facilitating our sustainability of this work in response to Resolution 22-04. Really trying to meet our carbon neutrality goals by 2030. But more important than that is really start focusing us as a district. We've done a lot of great things with regards to sustainability, but we, we need to get more focused. And what Green Schools is able to do is help us drive that process with our constituents. We had our first meeting last week with the Sustainability Committee. And tonight, what we want to do with the school board is bring you up to date on where we are. It's still very early, so it should be just a brief update there. And then start the ideation process with you on things that we can look to research and try to incorporate into the work we're doing with the Sustainability Committee, so that we'll make sure that we accomplish the goals that have been set forth by you as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Baird.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this, this evening. And so let's just dive right into this because this is an exciting time when we start to look at all of the things that we have on our plate. So I'm not going to read all that tiny print for you, but basically what he said is tonight, we're really going to give you a little bit of background around what we're doing, what the district has been doing already, and then give you some time to give administration some ideas and have us bring some of your thoughts back to the Sustainability Committee. So let's just jump right in. I always like to start with this slide for school boards because there's lots of reasons to do this work. You're doing it for the right reason, which is to save the planet. But there are other benefits that come from this as well. So when we start to think about, you know, looking at sustainability and looking at all of the things that, that this work brings for us, it does other things than, than just help on our sustainability plan. It's a great way to improve the health of the workplace for our students and staff. There are budget savings that can be had here, hopefully. This is a great way to increase student engagement or learner engagement because I would look at the adults in the room also as learners in this process. There's great branding for the district in terms of, hey, we're a green school district. We're doing the right thing. And I think parents like that and appreciate that as, as well as community members. And then ultimately, hopefully, we'll see additional community partnerships come together. And by the way, you're going to help us save the planet, so let's do that work. I am with the Green Schools National Network. This is, this is who we are, what we do. We are 100% aligned with the goals that you've identified in your, in your sustainability resolution. So we're, we're really happy to be here. I want to tell you a little bit about how we focus. This doesn't have to be the only way that the district will focus on this work, but we look at sustainability, equity and health as really being connected at the hip. These are these three things. You can't do one without the other or the other. And so when we talk about sustainability, we always look at the equity issues related to that and then the health issues that relate to that as well. So those are the things we, those are our spheres of influence, we would say. And then these are the ways we get at it. So when you start to look at the, at what we call our impact systems, these are the areas where the work occurs. So it's in leadership, it's in culture and climate, it's in curriculum instruction, and it's in facilities and operations. So those are things we're going to talk about tonight. I'm going to give you some examples of what happens in those areas so that you can think about what that work might look like here in Laguna Beach. So I also want to talk a little bit about what a sustainability plan is and how we get there and how involved all of that work is. And, and this is something that we're going to be working on with your Sustainability Committee and obviously with the board and administration as well. We start from this idea of you've got to understand what's out there. So tonight's about ideation. You're going to be helping us with some ideas. This is not your only chance to obviously give administration ideas around this work. But we got to start with the possibilities. What's happening out there? This is where research occurs. This is what linking with other districts and, and looking at how this work plays out in thousands of other places. So that's the possibilities. The realities are what's happening in your district. What are, what are the context factors that we have to look at here in Laguna Beach? You know, these are things like budget. These are like what the community is looking for. There's all sorts of realities that go with that. But at that intersection of possibilities and realities are opportunities. And those are going to be where we're going to find our targets and our vision for this work that's going to drive what we do over the course of the next year and beyond. So these plans don't have to be complicated. I always tell people they get a little worried about thinking about, oh, we're going to spend six months writing a plan that's going to take six months to put together. And then, no, we're going to start working on stuff really quickly. I just share this. This is our first plan in Encinitas was, let's do something. Let's do it with our team. Let's complete it. And then let's tell our community we did it, basically. That was our, that was our plan to start with. We added to it, mind you. But we don't have to be complex here. A plan does help, though. So this isn't willy-nilly. We're not just going to run from one idea to another because a plan helps you with that idea. I use a compass and a map here. It'll give us a destination. It'll, you know, where we're headed toward. It'll give us a direction. We're going that way. And possibly it's going to identify or lay out some routes for us as well. But we can deviate from that plan. And obviously, the board and administration and your Sustainability Committee will have a lot of say about what directions we take and how we get there. So one of the things that we are going to have to identify at some point is what buckets do we put these goals in? And I'm going to give you a couple of different opportunities to think about that. I've identified impact systems or looking at this through a department lens or identifying just big themes. So all of these things are possible. What does that mean? Well, if you start thinking about impact systems, and I'm going to give you a real quick rundown on the four impact systems, we could start saying, hey, we're going to look at this through the lens of leadership, curriculum instruction, and what are the big things that fall out of that? What are the big nuggets in there that we can do here? And that's one way to do it. One way that some districts approach this work is to look at, hey, what's happening in food services? If we look at food services and say, within there, are there some leadership tweaks we can make? Are there some facility tweaks we need to make? Are there things we can do with curriculum instruction with students that can help them understand this and create a healthier food culture? So you could start with departments as well. Or you might just want to start with big ideas. You know, you could start with the three pillars of the green ribbon, which identify reducing your environmental impacts, creating healthier learning spaces, and then teaching environmental literacy. There's lots of different ways to do this work, but we will need to figure out what buckets we're putting this work into so that then we can be a little bit more systematic about it. So I want to now quickly go through those, those impact systems. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because I want you to have some time to talk about this. But I think it's helpful to know what we're talking about with the impact systems. And it's really helpful. We've got board members on, on our committee as well so that they've got deeper knowledge and insight because they've had more time to talk and think through this work. So I want to start with leadership. So when you start thinking about leadership, and I'm not going to read everything to you on these slides, but the key thing around leadership is what do leaders do to support sustainability? Well, they create a vision. This often turns into plans. This turns into how do we implement this throughout all of our guiding documents and budgets? And then how do we communicate this and build partnerships with our families and community? Those are the basic things that we've identified from the Green Schools National Network that leaders do. And these, again, start with those beliefs. Turns into those big goals that we talked about. That gets turned into, you know, again, this is just how Encinitas identified the big goals. You can see those last two pillars are health and wellness and environmental stewardship. These were the four things all of our goals related to, still do to this day and have for the last 10 years. That gets turned into these targets and projects. So this is our environmental tree. Easier way to see that is to get up on the branches. Each of those branches is a project. And we will identify specific projects as we get into this work. And all of those projects will have action plans. They're going to be, we're going to, this was our walk to school programs and idle free zone. So we had specific steps we did. We had budgets. We had people in charge. We had timelines. We'll have all of that, but we'll build this as we're going. And then we put it in our LCAP. So it was in things that mattered to our board, mattered to our community, mattered to our budget. So in item number three there, it talks about, you know, creating green, safe, healthy spaces. And then we got to work. So you've got green teams. We already have a Sustainability Committee. We have people working on the sites, doing some incredible stuff already. So, and this includes students as well. Students of all ages, by the way, not just high school kids. I, you know, these are kindergartners running a scrap cart right here for us. So that is leadership. Leadership is about what we say, what we do, and how we communicate that and what drives the work. Curriculum instruction is the second impact system. And when we start to think about curriculum instruction, this is again, there's a plan. There is some thought around creating those supportive conditions to sustainability, using integrated approaches and thinking about this as more, we call it 4PBL, thinking about using phenomena, place, project, and problem solving to get, you know, to get the learning started. And then ultimately, you measure this work. You look at, are we making a difference? And you use that to sort of guide you. And I'm not going to go through all of this, but when we start to think about how we look at this, it's really about people and planet. So we call it the MVPs. Again, I'm not going to read everything, but it's moving the learning in the community and out into nature, valuing people, our differences and our similarities, and valuing nature, and then ultimately protecting yourself and others, thinking about environmental equity and those kinds of things. And then ultimately, looking at how do we protect our planet? And what are, what are the things we're doing in the district to do that? We also look at how we go about the learning. I'll, I'll talk more of this with our committee, but we really try to get students to an application level. We want them to be able to apply this work. And I'm not going to talk a lot about design and research, but this is critical to what we're doing. So tonight, we're going to be talking about research, which is going to be leading to design. So you're part of that design and research. And then ultimately, that 4PBL. And one of the key findings here is that this is high learner engagement comes out of this work. High learner engagement leads to student success. There is, there's tons of studies that show that. And there's nothing more engaging than doing something with purpose that people are passionate about, that they have some control or power over, and ultimately, that's fun. So. Culture and climate is the third actual impact system that we talk about. Culture and climate is really about the values and beliefs of the system and then how we address that on a daily basis. That's the simplest way of thinking about culture and climate. And there's lots of things to think about here, but we have to create a tone. We create a setting. And this is just one framework for looking at health and wellness. But when we start to look at health and wellness, is that becomes part of our conversation, then it's not just the physical components of that, but also the social, emotional learning that goes with that as well. And that can be things like looking at what are those other skills that students learn besides math and reading and social studies? And these are, these are the world-ready traits and skills that we used in Encinitas. Obviously, I'm sure you have certain beliefs and systems set up for students here too, and we'll, we'll go deeper to that. That healthy food culture is important. That might be an easy place to start on some of this work. So as you start thinking about ideas, I love to start. You've got gardens already on, so those are important. There's lots of ways that relates into students learning about nutrition, our food service program doing more to support that work. And there's lots there. Then getting people outside, getting families together. Facilities and operations is often one of the easiest impact systems to start with because, you know, you've got people already thinking about it. I, I know that your team here, your admin team, has already started that thought process around departments. So again, it's, it's about having a plan. It's about building leadership at all levels. It's about connecting those facilities and operations to the learning. It's not standalone. They connect. And then ultimately, you know, getting everybody involved in this work. So that's a big concept they're thinking about connecting facilities to learning and culture. And I want to make sure that, that we keep that somewhere in our mindset because so often districts will go through this process. They may put up solar, but they never tell students or staff that they put up solar and what it does or how it does. Everything you do on your campus is a learning opportunity. And so you need to make sure that you take advantage of that when, when we make a change in operations as well. We're doing something different. We need to be talking about it. We need to be putting signs out about it. We need to be sharing it with our community. And then getting kids outside, building those outdoor learning spaces that are so critical to learning. You know, there's lots of examples of what that can look like. And I know you already have some of those outdoor learning spaces, but we can add to it. And then thinking about the chemicals that we bring to our campuses and how to reduce some of those things. There's lots of ideas around that. This is a, an example of a machine that changes the chemical properties of water to make it a cleaning agent. So this is how we clean classrooms and desks and bathrooms in Encinitas. We don't use bleach unless there's something really major that happened in that room, which I don't want to talk about. And then we have energy savings. We have water savings. There's all sorts of ways to look at how this work can be driven by facilities and operations. And here's the good news, is that you have already started. The board has done some work on this that is very helpful. You've got sustainability resolution in place. You've started a committee. You've got us here to help with this work. Admin's doing a lot of work already. There's a vision statement already out there for facilities. There are green teams working on campuses. So there's lots happening. And you've got, most importantly, I think, a Sustainability Committee already started. So they've had one meeting. They've already started looking at some suggestions and ideas around this work. So we are not starting from zero. You guys have started, you're light years ahead of most school districts, I hate to say. I'm sorry to say because everybody should be doing this work, but I'm pleased where you guys are right now, and we're going to take this a lot further. So that's the update on where we are right now. Now it's time for us to start thinking about what we can do as a district and what ideas you may have that can add to the work that's already started from the Sustainability Committee, from the leadership team, which spent time at their leadership retreat, working on some ideas. And we don't have to do this all tonight, but I really do want you to start thinking in terms of, how can we look at those impact systems and start to see either projects or targets or big goals that come together out of that? And, and so I've got the first one up there, leadership. And again, this is about setting that vision. What is that vision? It's about sharing that and then sharing that leadership. How do we build that into some of the, the district documents and budgets and plans? How do we communicate that to our staff, to our students, to our community? And then how do we find those other partnerships that are out there? So I've got two questions for each of these four statements. And one of them is, how can we leverage leadership to improve sustainability? And then that second question is, what would you like for us to start researching or looking at or getting more information in this area? So that you have more information to go on as we start to make these decisions as we move forward. So a good example of, of that second question might be like, well, what are all of the board policies related to this? And are we up to date on that? You know, that's one of the things we could research. That's just an example. Where is this found in our budgets? Those are, so, and I don't know. I'm going to defer here to our, to our leaders in terms of how you want to structure as a conversation or some time for board members to work together? Or what would you like, Jeff?
I think if we could, it would be good to have a discussion so we can hear it. And I'm, I'm taking notes on what we want to see. Bless you. But just thinking about Tim's question on the research and what concepts or more information do you need as a board that we can do as a Sustainability Committee? So that as we're progressing with our work, it's coinciding with the information that you would find valuable along the way? So some examples might be looking at what are potential solar opportunities for a district? Knowing that there could be issues with putting on roofs or site views, we can investigate that kind of information. What other sort of water mitigation projects or opportunities might exist? Waste management, there's lots of different opportunities with regards to waste management. And even we talked about the pesticide management as well, the non-use of chemicals. We've, we've done the organic pesticides at our campuses, but the custodial supplies, we're not, what Tim's example had with the water that gets the chemical conversion to be a cleaning agent, we don't have that. So we can do more investigation on that. So you as a board, if you could just help us with that discussion, knowing this is not the only opportunity, but this is, we're early enough in the process that I just want to make sure we capture it as, as a group so that we can bring you that information you find valuable.
And, and we can have more of a free-ranging conversation like that. So this was just leadership. I'll just briefly go through the three other slides. This is around curriculum instruction. Again, this is how do we set those conditions for learning about sustainability, connecting sustainability to our facilities? How do we integrate that curricular design? Where might we do some things within our either curriculum department or our schools to make environmental literacy a reality for our students? And how do we bring teachers along with that? So that's the second one. Third one is around culture and climate. This is setting that culture, that supportive culture for sustainability. This is promoting those healthy relationships, thinking around that social, emotional learning that really connects with curriculum and in this area. And then things like healthy food culture, fitness, outdoor explorations and learning, and again, the social, emotional learning. And then finally, that last one is facilities and operations. And this is, this is related to sort of a facilities vision. Some of the things that Jeff was talking about fit right here nicely, where we start talking about how do we clean our schools? What ways could we reduce our environmental footprint? How could we reduce energy use, water use? These are all the big ideas that go here. And then are there other people out there that we should be talking to that we can learn from or things we need to know about? So those are the four areas. And now we can have that conversation. I'll turn this off.
Jan, do you want to start? Jeff, I need a more concrete idea when you say things we've done to know what we have done in these areas. So that can come information to us at a future time. I think that the, the water issue is critical for our area more than it might be schools in some other part of the country. And so what, I think we just have a real responsibility to do whatever we can. And I think it fits in more than just facilities with water. As I think certainly with environmental literacy, that we need to make sure that we're helping our students and then their families as and out, growth of those students to understand how critical it is. And that you, I mean, we're going to be asking people to make changes in the way they're used to doing things. And I've seen, I've seen students using the refillable water bottles or water stations for their bottles. But it's those kind of mindsets. I mean, it takes a certain amount of time to change habits. But again, I just, for, in any of these areas, and I guess in curriculum, it wouldn't be you, Jeff, but it'd be whatever we are already doing. Like with the gardens, we have gardens and, and how are we incorporating those?
I think it's a really important point that you bring up is where are we right now? And so part of our work over the next month is going to be helping to establish that baseline. We've already started. Jeff's working with somebody on my team that takes all of your energy use. And we're going to give you a, a really critical breakdown on where we are right now and what some of the targets might be as we go. So thank you.
But I think over the years, we've tried to do things. What was that system called that was at top of the world? That was photovoltaic? I mean, but we've not done things on a district-wide level. And what concerns me is as we work through this process, to make sure that we commit to it.
Yeah, that was actually the conversation at the time when the student board reps was specific to that, right? Is that you want a fifth grader going to middle school to know what our processes are when they go to throw their trash away? And how we like, so we have a very unique system here. It's different than what they might see at El Moro, than they might see at top of the world, and definitely than what they see at the high school. And so consistency is going to be important if we're really going to make a difference, right? And so bringing, you know, bringing along the idea like plastic water bottle, like getting rid of those and going to more, you know, where they're using the filling stations, right? So we have all those stations. But how do we create, you know, a district-wide public service announcement to have? You know, that's where the students, students can come involved, right? They can create that. And, and we can show that all the way down to the, you know, first graders and second graders who are bringing and sending it out to our families and that sort of thing. So to your point, I mean, the note that I created, I know you were talking about, is creating kind of a comprehensive list, things that are happening in these different buckets at each school site so that we can look at those opportunities and say, you know, maybe it's not a major overhaul to what this school's doing. Maybe it's a tweak to make it in alignment with that. You know, I definitely think there's some easy wins early on that we can probably get just from a practical side of behaviors that we have, you know, that we're, you know, you see the yellow trash cans, you see the three trash cans here. Working on that, as Dr. Baird points out, if you look at what happened at Encinitas, they had students who were monitoring, you know, and making sure that the students were, their fellow students were putting things in the right spaces. And I think creating that accountability at that young age is important and instilling that so that by the time they're young adults, you know, we're not having to remind them and they're not having to please each other because it's just a habit. And so starting early is something that we, we would definitely want to do. So I think really trying to gather, and that's what we've been trying to do, is start kind of really gathering some of those things that we do do. Maybe not wholesale, but that are impactful, including the use of the gardens, how we might be using our gardens for different opportunities for learning. And then, then once we know where we're at, then we can start kind of planning for it. And I think that's the important part, right? Is not getting too far out in front of, you know, kind of quantifying some things. However, some of these things take time to review, right? We may have to bring somebody on for solar to have, you know, to engage with somebody. So if that's the direction the board wants us to go, as Tim points out, we don't, we don't want to build a plan and four years from now actually start implementing it. So if there's things that the board has, you know, majority interest in to say, yes, we want you to investigate X and Y, we want to be able to start doing that now so that we can build it into, you know, our facilities master plan documents and these different pieces that we're doing. So that makes sense.
I think, you know, waste management requires that now with the food waste in, in our community, whatever served by waste management, we're to put that in with the yard waste. And I don't know how they're monitoring that, but, and that's, you know, that's, that's an issue that you see in the greater community. But it's, hopefully, then we can have students come out of our system knowing the responsibility they have for complying with things like that and, and what, what that means. It's, it's a big, it's a big task, but I think it's doable. If, but, and then I want to add one thing that I, I don't know what page I saw it on, but it was talking about having staff. I mean, they, when we bring things in, like I think it was using outdoor spaces. I mean, we have to make sure that we bring the staff in for those discussions because there will say, well, okay, when am I supposed to do that? In other words, I have all this learning I'm responsible for. So what do I do? What can I do outside? Because it is really good to have students get outside and not just be in the classroom all day for all their classes. But it will be, it needs to be presented so that it's not cumbersome. And I think the way that we do that is having them involved in the process.
And then if I can jump in with, I guess, I did, because you said the solar part. I would love to understand the solar feasibility. I doubt there's a wind feasibility, but since California is working on their ocean wind feasibility right now. But, and then I also agree with Jan about the water. Every time I see, you know, whether it's these plants here or even that little artificial turf in that little spot, I constantly think of what our natural meadows would look like because you create meadows. Meadows is just being like the natural landscape. And then nature comes, and then it's easier to then, depending on what you're teaching, you know, transition into something that is already just naturally happening. They're not trying to, remember when they did research on frost or something? They had to go fair and where they were, even, right? But if it was something that would actually come in, you know, bobcat at night or how many kittles cross across, you know, Thurston, wherever it is. But if we build a little meadows, it gives opportunities that way. And that's a little deeper than I expected my comment to go, but maybe. Yeah, yeah. And so that made me think of what you said about the water. Because every time in the lawn, you know, at the high school, I'm like, oh, that hill. Just the things that we water that students aren't using. I guess that's really it. But how can we think about it in a way that involves something that also they might just find pleasant to go sit in and, you know, let go of whatever that stress is? Like kids are the greatest wave, that resilience and building the SEL and everything, right? What you're talking about so that they want to get back in. But sometimes just going into an outdoor space lets them go into that, find that toolbox quicker and jump back in. So I think only give those spaces for them to be outside. And that makes me think of how you bring daylight inside too, which I know that we, we've spent so much time, everything on lighting and changing everything. And, and Jeff, you can correct me if I was wrong, but I think looking at all the rooms to make sure daylight's coming in. I think we did daylight audit, but back then when we did the lighting, didn't we?
We did a proper, when we did our proper, but there, there is a solar tubes. We have those in the two, the Gen seven buildings actually at top of the world, right? That really reduces the need for, you know, lighting. That really reduces the need for, you know, lighting, because you can use, we have, we're lucky here in California. We get a lot of sunlight, um, and so, uh, those are great ways and they, they function on a switch too, so you can darken it, lighten it and that sort of thing. So, yeah, they're very, very cool. Actually, I think Chad has like what, four of them in his own house, so.
Yeah, solar tubes are a, actually a very efficient way to address lighting too, um, in classrooms that don't have the expensive solar, um, so could be done on a regular budget. Um, and, and they're created bringing in natural lighting. However, with all things, there needs to be training for teachers. Um, kids get it, but I, I walk into classrooms and those, the covers are closed on it because they closed them up to do a presentation and never opened them up. So we solve that problem by putting kids in charge of the solar tube, so they, they're open now, so.
That's, that's awesome. And, and that's why I could, I just can't remember if we did the daylight stuff, so I thought, I'm looking at.
It's a great place, it's a.
And then, um, the same comments around plastic and sustainability, like, but really understanding how much plastic do we already use? Whether, and what the options are maybe for glass, to buy something in glass versus plastic. I was listening to the green pieces, right, and their piece on, they use example of uh, glue used to come in glass containers, right? Not plastic. And so just, but they're not providing it in glass, then we can't really do anything, but right? So it's like, what are the opportunities around that? Cause we don't know what they are, like what Jen said, we don't know what we're already using around plastic to be able to change that, but um, I think that would be important. Um, the chemical free cleaning, just like the organics is very important. And then the biggest, I, I, I could be totally wrong, but when I think about how as a community we are harming the atmosphere is through our transportation. And so ways to get everyone who's coming to a school site to do it in a greener way is going to require a huge switch and partnerships and so many, I know it's so many things and, and creating buses that can get up this hill that are electric and stuff like that. But that whole field, I think that's one of the like, that's that big elephant, right? That I don't, maybe it comes in little pieces, like I saw the walk to school, but not all of our schools you can walk to and stuff like that. So maybe it can come in little bites and little pieces, but I think that's more of this big, big item to tackle and we need a lot of partnership and community built around it to tackle it. And then gardens, nutrition. Uh, I know we've done lots of work around that, but continuing to develop that and maybe even hiring someone in that realm who oversees all of that down, down the line. It was my my thoughts and Jim or Dee, I know Dee, you're on the committee, so.
I agree with everything you, you said. I think, um, as, as far as the water and other utilities, um, can we look at them campus by campus? So we can see, so we can hopefully conserve more and show students the improvement. Um, one of the things that bothers me the most and it may not be our biggest problem, but we're looking at conserving water, we're looking at conservative electricity, gas, et cetera. And our, our food program now, everybody, you know, it's free. So kids get the whole thing and they may eat one little part and they throw the rest away. So they're seeing, especially at the elementary level, I'm not sure about middle and high school, you guys could help us with that. But they are seeing all this food thrown away every day, but we hear about people that don't have enough food. I mean, we're just making a mess with that. And part of it is the efficiency, they only have a little while to eat, so they just make everyone the same. And you can't say, you know, I would like, you know, I don't know, I'd like the apple, but I don't want the blueberry muffin. You, you know, you just get it all. So if we could figure out a way, whether it's having student volunteers, well, I'm not going to figure out how, but some way so, so students could just get what they want.
On a good note, though, it's probably not super high tech, because it's a box. But the kids actually at the schools, when they walk up to the tables and they have something in their container they don't want, they put it in the box. And so though not high tech, to your point, it's one way of not necessarily selling the, the lunch services down. But then the students you'll find, I watched it at top of the world the other day, it was really cute to watch, watching second graders um, drop a bag of carrots and, and then another student walk up and pull that bag of carrots out. Um, and then dropping apples in and then pulling them out. And so you really find that the students not a secondary, because I'm not, so, um, a good point to you all. And that's where I think we need to have a conversation on secondary level. The, but the elementary, the younger ones, it's just not formalized to your point, I think Dee is just, it's, you know, it's not something that, you know, it literally is like a copy box that we put out there, right? Right, and, and exactly, and it is, it is interesting, you know, the kids who like carrots, you see them because they're, they walk away with like two or three bags of carrots. Um, and then this one student walks by and he goes, I don't like carrots. I don't know why they keep putting them in there and I go, we'll put them back, put them in the box. And so I want to grab them and sure enough, you know, a student grabs them out. And I, I did talk to our food service folks over at Elmore about how they're doing it too, because I wasn't there at lunch and she said the same thing. You know, the students, they drop it off and, um, you know, we make sure that, uh, if, if it's still valid and it hasn't been opened, you know, we, we're perfectly fine doing that. You will find the student took one, a bite of like bagel and then put it in there because it tastes very good and like, no, that's, that's not the same thing. Can't reuse that, but, um, but I think we could formalize that. I think the, the challenge I find really is more the secondary level in particular, because we don't have that system. And I don't think that that would be something that would be cool to go and grab something out of the box, right? So, and maybe there is an opportunity at the secondary level, especially to say, if you don't want it, don't take it. You know, whereas the, whereas the younger students, maybe it's a different philosophy, right?
Some of them take, like they'll take the bag of carrots, they don't really want it, but they feel bad throwing it away. So they'll have one and you can't really put it back or they'll take one bite of something. So there's part, there's part of that too, that could use a little bit of massaging, but I think that the boxes where you haven't touched it or it's wrapped up are great.
So having a shared table is a good start and it, it's actually a great way to initiate some of this. Some of the problems come into, there are lots of laws and regulations involving food services that we have to comply with. Um, but there are districts that have found ways to either create more choice on the front end so that we're not taking things we're throwing away. Um, or to, um, to reduce the need to give like every kid a milk, you know? So I've seen like a, a milk filling station similar to a water filling station so that it's, it cuts down the waste for the kitchen as well as on, kids have the opportunity to take it, so the choice was offered. Cause that's important, you have to offer that choice. So there's ways around this. Part of the research that we will do is get you in touch with districts that are doing some of this work so that you could talk to them and, and, and one of the things we bring to the table is we work with lots of different districts, not just here in California, but really across the nation. So I, um, I just toured a kitchen in Boulder, Colorado that's doing some amazing stuff beyond what we were doing in Encinitas. So I'm putting Encinitas in touch with them because it's just, you know, it's a bigger district, but, um, some of the practices would work for you as well as they'll work for Encinitas. And so connecting you with that network and then potentially getting your people out to see districts in the area that are doing some of this work too, might be helpful.
Jeff, I'd like to know, um, if we have any way or dealing with over packaging.
You, you, I mean, in terms of food packaging?
Things now are so, so over packaged. And so then if you make your mind up that you're going to try to buy the thing that's not done that way. And I didn't know how much of an effect that we have on the way we, we order things because we are in large quantities.
Yeah, yeah, it's actually, it's getting better just because of the pandemic restrictions. With regard to food service, everything had to be individually wrapped, so the amount of packaging, you know, went up exponentially from before as we come out of that. It's going to just naturally start dropping and we're, are preparing more meals from scratch. So you're able to have less packaging because we're preparing different items together. But to the point, there's lots of different ways that we can explore. So as a note, just saying explore opportunities to reduce packaging, I think that coincides with some of the earlier discussions we had. And I liked, when we talk about going back to waste management, more of a global view is what opportunities for not only compliance, but also just generally reducing the amount of waste that we send to landfills, I think would capture that. And I think that's going to just tie into a lot of the work. And I think that's, yeah, definitely a big area for us, but I think there's way more than just a single solution.
I've been looking at some of the things so that I don't have to send things to a landfill. And there are really some interesting opportunities of things you can in textiles and things like that, that you, there are companies that do that, they're probably in other states, mostly they seem to be, some of them seem to be in London. But it, it, it can be done, it just, you know, I don't know for something like a school district, how hard it is to do that. Is, and that was not the same as the over packaging, that's the other end of it, when you're finished with something.
So it's, well, it's, when you talk about procurement is what I think you're talking about is how we purchase, what we purchase and what quantities we purchase. Um, it's a very complex task to do it in the right way. Um, because so often, you know, it's the, the vendors are promoting something else sometimes. And you got to dig a little bit to find the right product at the right price point. And so purchasing is an issue, um, for all districts that are trying to be more green. And I would say that, you know, we'll work with your admin team, but that, that's an area of, of focus for a lot of districts we work with. In terms of, they've got somebody who's, who's pretty trained in how to do that work and how to, because it could take all of his time and more um, to, to do this, um, in terms of a green lens on the purchasing. But that's a great point you bring up.
And I know that you don't go backwards in things. And so I have had experience long ago where uniforms with teams were used more than they are now and the uniforms were handed down. So like a lower level team would have some pretty scrappy looking uniforms. Then this community in itself changed, so that's not acceptable. I mean, you're not going to go back to that, but, um, I would be interested too to know if on those suppliers, if there are ones who buy back like a, like a, like a, like a, like Patagonia, how they do with their products. If that is a.
And we've done that with, you know, some of our bigger items, like the football helmets, for example. Uh, we've, we've done that where we've, uh, when we had more than we needed and we had purchased some new ones to match that we sold our old ones to another school district, so they just wouldn't sit and wait, you know? At that point, what's, you know, why keep them? We do have some sports, I think that do more of a hand, I would say hand me down, right? Um, from one group to the next, um, and, and they have a rotation and then there are some that want, some uniforms are very small, right? And not like a Speedo is something that is, is, right? So you're not going to do that with, um, but I think it's definitely worth us kind of investigating, like what is our current practice on some of those things? And, and what are we doing with some of th- those old, um, uniforms? And, um, because that is one of the, the things that you hear about a lot is, is just clothing waste, right? Then how much clothing we have actually and the process that ends up in the landfill as well. So that's a, that's a great point. So I think that's the, a lot of the investigation side for us too. I, I think I would like to try to find a couple places to go visit to see some of these things in action. I think that's something that we've talked about and, um, of, uh, in talking with, uh, Eclipse, the, the group out of UC um, and Cal State, then, you know, there's, I know there's places and programs that exist in some of these areas that we want to investigate to see how might we, we do that. So that's one of the charges of the group is using our partners that are out there as well, including schools, like what, what exists so we can go see it? Um, because I think seeing it is really helpful, you know, to, for process, right?
Well, and as I was gonna say, textiles, there's, um, I don't remember what the yellow box is called, but they, they do a school. I know it's in California now, they were starting in, in Boulder. But they do, um, some kind of school fundraising from it, but they sell the textiles. And so it could be things that are still good or things are no longer good, right? They're just going to sell back to someone to, to. I don't, I don't know, this is. Yeah, I just know they bring this big box and like you could put the stuff in it, right? Yeah, and I just don't know what, I don't.
Mike can, Mike can tell you, he, he got a lot of shoes one year, um, they did a shoe, recycling shoes.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. So I mean, there is, I forgot about that one. But there are the different ways, it, it doesn't have to be a charitable part of it, it is, there's different ways for textiles. It made me also think of like, we have the swap meet, right, Thurston is a solution for stuff, but there's also free cycling where you, you know, Laguna doesn't use as much as other surrounding cities, but there's things that like, you don't want it to go to the dump, but you really don't want to sell it. Right? Or you don't, you don't see the value quite in it, but someone takes it and remakes it into something else. So there's, so I just see those things kind of happening more as this happens that free cycles will happen either by sites or within the community as a whole. The textile boxes are definitely a big thing because constantly looking at how to either sell clothing or recycle clothing. And then part of it, once again about, um, it had to have been Boulder, the stuff I was listening to on, because I told them about, it was in Colorado. Um, but charging stations and other things they did that they put in place to convince people to move more towards electric cars, right? Go along with the school's investment into electric busing and so, so that additional things.
Yeah, that's, we've talked about electric charging stations possibly. Would that be something that the students, probably e-bike, electric charging for sure.
Then they'd be in that daytime, lower rate time, not the.
Following up on what you were talking about with the clothes, um, you might want to think about partnerships like with the assistance league. Uh, of putting some, I know on college campuses at the end of every semester, that they would bring on these big containers where the students could put all the clothes that they didn't want anymore in. And then the, the equivalent of the assistance league took them and, uh, resold them, refurnished them. Uh, and, and I think it, it goes with the cultural building and the partnerships. And I think that, um, what I'd like to see was closing the circle on what we're doing here is I think our students are the best ambassadors for change, particularly in this area of taking it back to their homes. Taking it back to the businesses. And that I don't think we're focusing on enough here, that I, I think it's real easy to involve our, our kids and our administrators who are all behind this. But I think where we could do the best work is going out beyond the walls and going into the community and getting, uh, getting the support built up there. And then when we're not here, the next people that come will, will have it a lot easier.
Certainly is a great, for example, and I think at UCLA, that's, the clothes went to that. And then there's a textile for, they sorted through and if it was something that wasn't, it was a pillow or one, whatever it was, right? At least they, they would put them and I just saw it when it was done, it was all compressed together as, and they sold it. They sold it to people who are making clothes who would then turn all that into something else, so it was fascinating. There you go. There you go. And then have fellowships from colleges, you come talk to the kids or whatever, right? Like who are excited about sustainability.
The Nike store takes shoes.
Yeah. Oh, and I guess renovate, when we're looking at fields, like, and I think that's part of the master plan is to look at the elementaries too in their fields, so we're, we're cutting down on water.
Yeah, I put that in the, what, what sort of water use reduction opportunities exist, even those beyond facilities we'll look at too.
Okay, great, okay.
And I would say so often in the school business, we look at outdoor spaces as being either concreter or turf. And there are other options there, so, um, we'll, we'll look at the outdoor learning spaces. And it's not just about saving water, but about also creating better learning spaces for kids too.
Yeah, because the ecosystem itself, like helping the ecosystem is very important and growing things that are native, so the bugs and the birds and the, right? Everything is supported through nature and you're not trying to support it some other way. And it's such a great lesson and.
Yeah, it kind of ties back to the comments you were making at the beginning about how that's just let, let it return to natural uh, space and, and there's a lot that can happen there, so.
Yeah, I think the second grade, uh, second graders want, they do the natural, the field trip in LA. Um, natural museum or.
Oh.
Where they learn about fire and the cycle in Southern California.
Yeah.
I did it three times, I think I remember, but.
Trade level it was.
Yeah, and so kind of not the fire part of it, but the, the, because it also has all the meadows and everything else and where the mar, butterflies come through. And, and I thought, wow, if that actually carried through for them outside of elementary, you, you know, it wasn't just this thing they did once up in LA, but they see it as part of the schools and.
Just fully transparent, I put that with, um, looking at our use of water for plants, so gardens, having a purpose for watering and looking. So natural meadows have been an example and also looking into wet plants. What meaning you can have them for, do some generator filter the air better versus, um, being just, uh, locally grown? So I think we got all that.
And I was listening to something about what filters best is actually, you know, the soggy swampy, we don't want, but that doesn't, I don't know if that really would be here. Because we're not, we're not those places, but they're better than trees. So but it's, you really have to look at that because you might plant something thinking that would be good, but there's a better option, right? That.
Well, the, the other part of that what filters best is you're a coastal community like Encinitas is. And so you have water runoff issues going to the ocean that needs to be looked at, addressed and dealt with. Um, you, I, I know you have a stormwater plan now, you must have because that's part of the law. But, um, there's ways to work students into that work as well. And so, um, that could be something we look at.
And I was worried about saying capturing rainwater, because I know that there's a whole recycling of the water. So I just, I was quiet on it because I was like, I don't know where they are in the water issue and I don't.
You can use rainwater for watering plants, not edibles, but other plants. So there, every one of our campuses in Encinitas has multiple rain collecting stations. So, uh, for the three times a year rains, so.
Right, so it also doesn't do it much, so you have to look at the cost of.
They feel so fast, they feel so fast. And even here, they, even here, if you have a real overcast morning, you're getting water in those.
Yeah, well, yeah, you get it from the fog and stuff.
And then if you actually get rain, then your barrels are full and you can't use it because the ground doesn't need it. So you have to really have a, a cistern, how do we say that, underground to store it.
There are cisterns and various ways of dealing with that as well. There are cisterns and various ways of dealing with that as well, which are, there's some interesting opportunities there too. So. And there's all different kinds of water barrels too. So there, that's a great um, investigative challenge for us, so.
And the state of California's water district is looking at just that. How we have a lot of water that is wasted, that comes from the sky, that, you know, comes from other, other uh, or or piped in. And how can we make better use of that?
Well, when Jim says that about partnering out in the community, our water district is, tries to be really proactive about that and about. You know, giving things to people, the the, the nozzle that goes on into your hose. So that you can control the use and it has all the different, different. Um, ways of water comes out. Some of it's very, very soft. So and they have wildflower seeds. I mean, they. But they had a while back, they had a rain barrel contest, rain barrel painting contest for kids, for the kids.
Well, that's why I I didn't look at their website recently. So I was like, I don't want to state, I don't know where they were on the rainwater. This was like, I don't want to mention it, but it is. It partnering with them and working with them. Yeah.
So that's a water districts, transportation districts, all of those um, other government entities like that. Not only are they, do they have um, resources that they already give, they have money for school districts too, if we ask in the right way. And they also have expertise that can help us work with kids so that we can do some education there too. So they love to work with school districts, but we don't usually ask them. So I think it's great that you point that out. And there are other agencies like that that would love to work with you. That maybe we haven't figured out a way to do that yet, but we can look at ways to do that.
And then often D's coming, the Savannah desert was, you know, getting larger and larger and. For five years, people were putting different ideas of like how to stop the desert so they can have the water. And a farmer, not farmers, indigenous person who had kept their soil going. They had an old history that they would just make these divots constantly in the sand and people couldn't understand what these little divots were. Well, because that little pocket would get water, right? And also the stuff started growing because they weren't wasting anymore. And it was just little bitty divots. And all of a sudden, things are green, meadows happen, right? The the desert can stop. And everybody else had these billion dollar. You know, building different things. And so kind of back to that indigenous, the way the the earth works. Shifted that whole way of slowing down that and created this beautiful land that I didn't even know could be in that space, right? Just these meadows. And that's where the meadows then led back to California. And I went to the museum. That's where I read about that part. So. So divots. Divots in the ground, not where the little ones get tripped on. Is there anything else? Transportation, water, solar, how we use plastic, how we use um. Where the other one was now, just left my head, how we um, what services we do have on purchasing? Is there anything else? Oh, you know what? Can you read us back our list so we can see if there's anything else that we, let's do it that way.
Are there any ideas from the student board members that would like to add to what's been said?
I actually got a um, a slight question. So how would the implementation of the water collection work alongside solar? Like, how would you fit everything, you know, like on these rooftops? You know what I mean?
On, I I'm sorry, I missed the first part of the question.
Sorry. So how would you combine solar and the water collection?
So water collection doesn't have to occur, it can get roof runoff. And it comes underneath that. And then it goes into barrels usually or cisterns along that are adjacent to the buildings. So. And also it doesn't have to be on the roof either. So there's a lot of interesting solar arrays. That are over bike parking areas, that are over car parking spaces. We put up a taller, a solar display over a um. An asphalt area where kids played basketball and different things. So it created some shade. So you can also start thinking of it as a shade array that might be, or just a solar field by itself. That's often a separate part of the campus. That nobody uses, but it gets a lot of sunlight. So there's lots of different ways to think about solar too.
Yeah, I think we could build maybe a solar kind of just a series of panels like in the district parking lot, maybe. I think that would be great for um, like on the student end. Because I know a lot of students park in that district parking lot and, you know, their cars get heat up because they're just exposed to that sunlight. So I think it'd be. Good, you know, it's a win-win situation in my opinion.
I heard it will take away parking spaces, but taking away parking spaces would cause people to come other ways. So that's still. It's a win-win, see? Instead of thinking of it as. And chargers, yeah, yeah, would kind of encourage that shift because it is, it's a community shift. It's not just.
I don't want to evaluate any options. It's just that tends to be the more expensive of the solar is the parking lot version. You can do crown mount for a little cheaper. So.
Well, that's. But what about like our slopes and stuff? What about slopes?
Well, and again, that's, I think that's part of the the process of getting somebody and who's an expert to look at all of our properties and all of our score footage and. Um, and then at the same time, you know, we have our our facilities master plan going along with this, right? So what do we build into that plan as we go through this process? What's in addition to that, right? That um, you know, the all of this is going to require, you know, um, money. But as Dr. as Tim points out, there's potentially money out there for some of these projects. So. Um, once we know, we have a general idea of what it is the board, you know, wants us to investigate, we'll bring it back and then we can start figuring out, you know, where might there be options for partnering? Where might we go looking for some offsetting? Um, and then how does it all fit into, you know, the broader budget?
So do you have enough information from us tonight?
I think the.
Yeah, that's what we're.
I mean, uh, we were just kind of discussing more on the like academic standpoint of it. I think the high school has done a pretty good job with flow. And trying to educate our students more on the topic of it, which is great. But we were discussing on in regards to the more cohesive, like through middle school and elementary school, we'd be implementing flow there. But also giving it a purpose and a guidance because we're learning about it plenty, which is fantastic. But there's not really a project that we're doing as a high school collectively, other than learning. When you're a freshman, you're learning about fire, great, but there's no project. There's no result from it, I would say necessarily. So maybe creating a project for each grade to do at the end of the year or so, based on improving what you learned throughout the year.
And I I think I felt like on curriculum side is can be more as the conversation goes on and facilities more, I love that idea. I'm not taking.
Yeah, I know, I think.
Comment on curriculum as much because I thought.
Right. No, I think it's important um, because some of these things that when we do these updates provide opportunities. And I think that flow is one of those opportunities, right? Flow didn't exist a couple of years ago. It it started up and I think um, to your point. How do you make it so it's, there's a service learning component potentially, right? A community component. And and that's again, you know, Tim Shiggin's over there. We we think a lot alike. So that there's a purpose behind it, right? That makes it a little more meaningful, that learning. There's a relevancy to it, I think, and works, we're really looking at that. And so that's a huge push in the state of California. So that's like the fantastic part around. The fact that, you know, we're where we are located, close to adjacent to UCI and the work that they're doing on this topic. Um, you're going to be to both roped into this conversation as we move forward because they want to hear from students. And they also are going to be coming to us to potentially pilot some different ideas out there around curriculum and instruction. And so. Uh, that's one of our lucky community partners that we have is, you know, they want to try things out and see, you know, some lessons that would be impactful. And maybe not impactful, right? So trying, trying different things out along the way. Um, getting your voices in the room because ultimately um, you're inheriting this earth, just like, you know. Right now, you you have a lot of challenges ahead. And so being a part of that service learning component, not just learning about it, but actually doing something with it, I think is really important. So your, your point is very well taken.
The learning path ended with application, right? So and I was, I think, I'm not positive, looking at other schools, Huntington Beach. High School, I believe, has a lot of solar on there. It's the parking area for students and staff. And I don't, I've often wondered how much it generates. If because is, when some of the smaller areas, like little malls, strip malls, I guess they call them, were in putting in solar and then they could sell the excess?
The the other good thing about looking at solar now is the battery technologies have come a long ways so that. Your solar can generate power that you can save and then utilize um, at other times as well. So. There's a lot of options in the solar industry right now in terms of how you could use that and what that might look like.
No, no, no. I just, why you said that. So one of, one thing we are uh. If you didn't hear Carol, she's going to buy every student freshman a goat, but um. Well, as it relates to fire, we all know that the goats are a very popular, you know, uh, popular animal around here. To that said, however, we have, we do have some community members interested in being a part of, you know, um, the animal side of the environment, right? So we're talking about sustainability. Um, but there's also interest in uh, potentially, you know, bringing more animal. Outside learning, right? Including, you know, 4H or something like that. So we've have apparent, yes, we have parent groups that are interested in talking more about that. Um, you know what that might look like, obviously, uh, from a facility standpoint, we've been talking about that, the other pieces in the facility standpoint. You want to check, well, the roosters probably the city might not like, but um.
I I would say you would be my first goat project that we've worked on. So.
Yes, you know, so that is something that we're talking about because to to your point, right? To make it really meaningful for students around what happens in the environment, getting students outside and and being part of that. That's a component, right? So that will be something we'll, we'll continue to investigate and update the board as well.
Anything else? Any other questions? This is exciting, very exciting. Okay. And it's, it really has dire consequences if we don't do anything about it. So we're not enough about it too. So this brings us to eight, eight, and thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. And this brings us to eight. And we provide an update, maybe like everything we cover, just so that we're all, that'd be awesome. That'd be awesome. Thank you. Okay. So next regular scheduled meeting will be held in person here at Thurston School Library, November seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Um, may I have a motion and a second?
So I believe it's your last meeting also. And I just wanted to thank you for the leadership that you provided uh, over the last two years. It's just been a pleasure working with you and learning so much about the Brown Act. I will always, I will always be scared about the Brown Act and uh.
As well we should be.
Carol, it's 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 been, it's been wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. But we're, some are good.
There's been three years of uh, COVID and my business has kind of uh, been powing up. And so I have a whole lot of it to do in three weeks. And so uh, it's all over Europe and different places, which is really going to be fun. Yeah, it's, as long as I don't get COVID before I leave.
We'll cross our fingers, we hope not. Okay, so that will be the next, oh, any emotion? I'll move to the jury. Okay, all in favor? Yay, okay. Okay, so motion parrot carries four zero one and um, it is seven oh four. Thanks, everyone.